Call the meeting to order. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day in the city of which we live, God has this afternoon as we make our decisions, Mr. Christ name.
Amen.
Amen.
This is the regular meeting of the Nunnan City Council November the twelfth, twenty twenty four. You have the minutes of the regular meeting of October the twenty second, twenty twenty four before you all entertain a motion. We adopt those minutes.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. We adopt the minutes as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All of the appointments and boards and commissions need to be put on our next agenda, please. Mr. Phil, do you have anything today?
I do not.
I don't have anything today. Under new business and consideration of an ordinance to amend the charter of the city of Nunnan, amending Article Two, City Government, Section two point one two, ordinance form procedure, and to provide for an adoption of ordinances upon introduction. If you will all recall, this is a two-part process. One is a vote on the amending charter and the other is a, the next item on the agenda is a, is a vote on the ordinance itself. First, I would need a motion on amending the charter.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
To, uh, motion carried, five two. The next item on the agenda is going to be, held over until our next meeting because the previous item did not, pass unanimously. So, we'll, item H will be on our next agenda. Uh, the next item on the agenda, a rezoning request. I'm gonna ask Mayor Pro Tim Guion to handle this item as my firm has a business relationship with the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is reference to, uh, no action's gonna be needed. As for information only, this is a rezoning request for RZZ two, is twenty twenty four oh four by Stephen L. Jones, Attorney at Law, on behalf of Templar Development Company LLC on seven point oh six acres located at one forty seven Temple Ave. Uh, the urban, it's from, um, the parcel number is N twenty one zero 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 one dash zero zero one, from the urban commercial neighborhood district to PDR, which is the planned development residential for the purpose of developing a residential neighborhood. And again, this is for information only, so no action is needed. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. The next item is also very similar to the, to the past. It was a rezoning request, RZ twenty twenty four zero three by Terrence Forbes Taylor for point one eight six acres, located at fifty one Robinson Street, tax parcel twelve, N twelve, zero zero four zero zero three A, from heavy industrial to RUI Urban Residential Dwelling District Historic Infill for the purpose of constructing a duplex. Again, this is for information only, no action needed. So we move on to page two. Item K is a consideration of allocation of existing ARCO awards for government service programs and for new obligations and unallocated funding. Mr. Moody, how are you today?
I'm doing great, Mayor and Council. Uh, I'm here to answer any questions if you have any questions about the allocations in the memo before you.
Anyone have any questions? Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion is, and the second that we approve, uh, the consideration of reallocation of existing ARCO awards and government service programs for new obligations and unallocated funding. Any discussion or questions, Mr. Moody? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Thank you, Mr. Moody. This, the next up is a consideration of extension of work authorization for lane separator curb system. Mr. Quall, how are you today?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Uh, as you recall, we, at an earlier meeting, we, uh, you, you decided that you wanted to try this curb system out on Lower Fayetteville Road. And I believe it's been a huge success for everyone but the people that still want to make illegal left turns. And they're finding a way to go through the gap. So I'm back to let you know that our vendor will extend his unit prices and we would like to propose three additional locations. The first is to close up the gap between the two. The next one would be at Nickel Creek and CVS, and the third one is down by the Chevron Station by the bypass down there.
Okay. Are there any questions, Mr. Quall? Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. We approve the request of the extension of work authorization with lane separator curb system. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Quall. I think you're still up. Uh, consideration of a three-year plan for road and street maintenance.
Yes, sir. This is our rolling three-year plan. We are in the process of working through twenty twenty four. Um, this would add twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, and twenty twenty seven. Um, again, we are still working from the same, assessment that was conducted a few years back with a pavement condition index of sixty and below. And, uh, I, you've got two, uh, you've got the three lists up there to extend the, the plan. Uh, we're still working with approximately two million dollars plus our LMIG money, which has been averaging around five hundred thousand. That would put us at two point five million annually, uh, over the next three years, if that, if that stays.
Questions, Mr. Quall?
I do. Do the, does this list include the short streets that we have been talking about at one point?
The, the streets, I believe the streets that we talked about, short streets, we did them, we tack them on to the one we're working on this year.
Okay.
And they have been completed. Crits Alley and, uh, what was the other one? Kate's Alley. Which alley is the name of the street. They're not alleys.
Right.
They're public streets. That's important.
Yeah, 'cause I see Kate's on here as well and Crit on here, and so that was in twenty twenty four that you complete those?
Yes, they are completed.
I didn't see Jones Alley.
Uh, Jones Alley, we, it's not been that long since we paved Jones Alley.
So that was done previously.
That's been done, it's been a number, uh, several years, but we have done that in the last ten years, Jones Alley.
Okay. 'Cause I saw it on the map as one of the ones that needed help, but I was like, okay.
It's, it's possible. It's possible. Yes, they're not well, they don't have a lot of structure under them. They won't hold up as long as a, a normal street with a pavement structure.
Okay. Thank you.
Michelle? When you bid them, do you look back and see what the difference was in your estimate of what we were gonna spend? And 'cause you're sometimes a year or two ahead.
Yes, sir.
How much difference is there in the price now and the price estimate?
Well, as you recall, I think for twenty twenty four, we had to move a segment of streets out of that one because we were exceeding our budget and it's, it will be forthcoming. Um, we, I do, sometimes it's, it's kinda hard to plan for it. I kinda estimate maybe ten percent annually. That's why don't bank on twenty twenty seven.
Difference, period. The price of oil, which affects everything.
Yes, it will. Absolutely. It's, the price of oil has to do with the cost of asphalt and another big cost is hauling, uh, the trucks that are using the diesel fuel.
Continue your comment on twenty seven. You did not include a price on twenty seven.
Oh, right, yes. I've, I've, I ballparked it at two point five million, but that's so far out in the future. We'll, as we finish up the next year, I'll, what I do is I take the bids, the last couple of bids, and look at the unit prices and try to see how they're, how they're going. And, um, some go up, some go down, but then I try to apply the best data that I've got to do my estimating. So twenty twenty seven, you know, we may find out that there's too much there already, or we can add a few more streets and we'll certainly come back to you with that, any revision to twenty twenty seven.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the plan.
Motion is second. Approve as presented. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Thank you, Mr. Quall. Mr. Norton, consideration of a project award for Fairview Drive Corvet replacement. How are you today, sir?
Doing good, Mr. Mayor. Hope you and Council are doing well. If y'all have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Any questions from anyone? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. We approve the request as presented. Any discussion?
I got a quick, quick question for you. About how long are we looking at for the whole timeframe for the road closure?
A good estimate is, is about seven months. Um, the weather's gonna play in that. There's, there's a lot of different factors, but seven months, probably.
Okay. I just wanna make sure that, you know, all, everybody around that area knows and has, and I'm sure you know. So, all right, thank you.
Okay. Do you have a motion to second? Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carried. The next item, thank you, Mr. Norton. The next item is a consideration for confirmation of Georgia Public Web for final distribution of assets for the, of the sale of the, uh, Public Web. Um, and that, uh, this is a continuation, uh, of the money that was held back from Public Web when they made the fi, the, uh, first distribution of the sale. As everybody understands or remembers, this money was put in play and the purchase was made by Nunnan Utilities, uh, to buy their position in the Georgia Public Web decades ago. That sale is now being finalized with this action across the state with all the cities that are participants in Georgia Public Web and that this money will be sent back to, of course, to Nunnan Utilities. So, is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Motion is second to approve. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carried. Thank you. Uh, unfinished, unfinished business. The first item is a consideration of a lease agreement at twenty seven Clark Street.
I make a motion that we move this to executive session because it's real estate and a possible legal.
All right. Is there a, second?
Second.
Motion is second. We discuss this item in executive session, closed session for, uh, legal and real estate. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carried. Okay, pass six one. Thank you. Uh, the next item is cemetery policy operations, maintenance, and capital project planning discussion.
Uh, yes, Mayor Brady, as I'm introducing the topic, I'd like Mr. Norton to join me in case there are questions about the operations of the department, um, his, he's responsible for. So this item is a continuation from the council retreat. As many of you recall, we ran up against the clock and this one just didn't survive. Um, today, what you're gonna see, um, is staff, um, seeking direction primarily in three main topic areas. The first being policy. How could, how may we change the current ordinance now? The second is gonna be in operations and maintenance. Are there ways in which we may consider changing the way in which we operate and maintain the fit, uh, cemeteries we have now? And then the third, we'll be talking about, um, capital project planning for future use of twenty SPOS twenty twenty five funds. So, at any point during the time in which, you know, you wanna chime in, please do so. Um, there are just a few slides here, but really, we're looking for direction. We don't have anything here today, um, no ordinance to vote on or anything of the like. So first, policy. What I have here listed, um, bulleted, are a cou, a couple of those kinda large ticket items written in narrative form that really get to the meat of what staff is suggesting we may consider to change in our current code of ordinances. This slide, this first slide, really talks about clarifying the authority and ownership of burial rights on those plots in the cemetery. When an individual or group of individuals purchases a lot, how are those lots or plots managed, um, over time? As individuals may pass or leave the community and there may not be a paper trail, shall we say, um, an actual specific written device, a will, or any kind of written declaration for how that plot may be used. We, we would like to see clarification in how that's handled. So that would be a potential ordinance change that would be brought back to you. Now, we also wanna, you know, consider the orders of right to family members in their interment. Get a little bit of clarification, um, on plots that have several owners. These, this does exist. And what the ordinance change may consider is naming a certain individual. If you have a group of folks who own a plot together, there's one who's a, I'll use the term spokesperson for the use of that plot, how that is. So again, giving a little bit of greater clarification to Mr. Norton and his team, specifically John Martin, who runs the cemetery department, so that he and his team know how to handle when individuals show up and say, you know, kind of in a colloquial way, "My mom and them said I have this." Say, "Well, sir, we don't have a record of that. We need to, we wanna be able to help you figure that out." And so right now, we have a very hard time dealing with that situation. And so this, the clarifications here will hopefully better help not only that individual, but our staff find a, a way to a happy ending. Um, this also talks to vested rights, who has a right, um, and how do you define, um, what those vested rights are? So that's a lot of what the policy is. The first section of ordinance changes on the policy side, trying to clarify those things. We do have challenges from time to time. I'm looking at Mr. Norton. It doesn't happen, thankfully, every week or every month. There are, from time to time, challenges that exist, as you could imagine, with cemetery that's been around as long as some of our cemeteries have been. Does anybody have any feedback on that? Again, this is mostly for clarification purposes and provide guidance to staff and the public.
And there certainly will be a legal aspect, uh, what we present back to you. Here, Mr. Sears, I have to.
He will be definitely a part of this review. I mean, you know, Mayor Brady, as, I mean, you signed the deeds. You know, there's more to this than come in, buy a plot.
I understand. Yeah, well, again, what staff is looking for today is, is, uh, some movement forward, permission to move forward from this body as they go through these things. So if you've got questions or comments, of course, we're gonna have the final product come back for us and we're gonna have an opportunity to review that, ask questions, vote at, at the appropriate time. But is, is there any objection at this point, Council? I mean, for, uh, staff to move forward with these ordinance considerations?
No objection.
Well, I have a question, though. I mean, you're clarifying the authority and the ownership of burial. I mean, I guess until it comes back, you kinda won't know exactly what you're trying to do about it. I mean, that's, so, I don't know if I, so, I, I mean, I guess if this is to go back and say, hey, let's examine these things, then, yeah, go back and examine them and come back to us with something we can really consider.
That's right. This, the way it's being presented now is how we would have presented it in retreat fashion, where it would have been a discussion, right? This was asked to be continued to this meeting, and so we didn't wanna bring an ordinance to the group without having some sort of conversation ahead of time. Um, so to your point, you'll see that, and you'll have an opportunity then as a corporate body to consider what's being kinda presented to you. So the next section is, you know, of additional ordinance changes provides for some, um, again, authority to the superintendent of the cemetery, Mr. Norton and his staff to, you know, maintain those shrubs, trees on the lots, remove offensive or improper objects. As you may recall, at the end of our session last week, I showed you where somebody had a baseball glove with a shotgun shell left in it. Um, and there are other items that are left from time to time that are not only offensive, but likely improper. Um, and so we'd like to have the authority to remove those items. Um, the shotgun shell in and of itself is, of course, dangerous. But there are other items from time to time that are placed at, at our cemeteries, um, that are quite improper. And so we'd like the authority to remove those items. Um, we'd like to be able to, you know, regulate monuments and headstones a little bit more, potentially remove height limits right now in newly placed monuments. Look at after-hours visitors, you know, currently, right now, that's, believe it or not, our cemeteries actually have a closing time, you know? And we believe that there are opportunities that we could have after-hour visitors come with an application or approval from staff so that we know individuals are there during that time. So this would create that opportunity. In the agenda item, uh, that you all had beforehand and looked through, we talked to, I, I tried to lay out the beginning of our cemetery ordinance from the nineteen seventies over time. Some of these items, in full disclosure, haven't been touched for forty, fifty years. So some of this is cleaning up the current ordinance. Um, so that's why you see some of the things here. Um, I'm gonna skip that third from the bottom bullet and come back to it in one second, but we also wanna talk about certain holidays, um, in trying to prohibit interments, disinterments on certain holidays, and potentially allowing multiple interments. I believe Councilman Carrickco had commented on this at our retreat, you know, for double-depth plot and second rite of interment. Mr. Norton can define those terms if you need to, but, um, they're commonplace nowadays in cemetery management. Um, and so again, our ordinance, because of the age of it, um, does not even contemplate those opportunities.
Okay, at the retreat, we also talked about the, you said removing height limits? I thought you were implementing height, height limits.
No, man, there are height limits now that occur on monuments. They can't be of a certain size that we're considering potentially removing that, allowing for, I guess, freedom of choice, if you will, in the size monument you may like place at a plot event.
What happened to the conversation about these big things that you all would have to get around? I mean, you talked about it, not it, it was a month ago.
I believe what you're referring to, um, Councilwoman Jenkins, is the, the difference between the, a headstone and a monument, and you had to have four lots to actually have a monument versus just a headstone.
And that's the suggestion, 'cause that's not the current rule, correct?
Um, currently, there's, uh, there is a regulation on monuments and headstones, but I don't, I'd have to, to pull the, the current ordinance to.
I, I think what we're, the intent here is to allow for a little bit more freedom and choice of what an individual or family would like place there as, as opposed to it being absolutely uniform. So, again, this will come back to this body and this corporate body can consider, and if it's not something you like, then we make a decision at that time. But that's one of the ideas that staff will be bringing forward. And then if I may return to that from the third, third bullet from the bottom is to consider, um, allowing for a contractor, an outfitter, an individual to open and close graves. So, that would, we would contemplate that in the ordinance, in addition to how we operate and maintain the department, but we would put that into the ordinance as well.
I, I've got two questions.
Yes, sir.
Uh, part of the ordinance change, uh, was mentioned about, you know, being able to remove stuff. Uh, one of those flags, you know, I know during, like, certain holidays, um, patriotic holidays, you know, groups would come out and put flags. Would that be allowed and how would we?
That, that would be allowed.
Okay, you know, for veterans and that kinda stuff. Um, and the other question was, is, what are we looking at doing this? Ordinance change is one large ordinance change, or would we be doing this piecemeal ordinance by ordinance, or, you know, section by section?
Our preference would be to do the, the entire cemetery section of the code of ordinances at once with all of these changes in there.
Okay.
Makes it easier for staff, makes us easier to employ, and then communicate to the public that these things have occurred on this date, this time. Not that it can't be done piecemeal, to use your term, whatever's appropriate.
If you have something that you're absolutely concerned about that may prohibit the ordinance from moving forward, we'd certainly like to know that so that maybe we can take that item separately later so that we can get some of these, uh, ordinance improvements in place. That would be our, I think, our, our desire.
Yeah, my only, my only, on the last slide, uh, there was like seven items on there.
Mm-hmm.
I, I just think, I, it might be beneficial to visit some of those separately, just to kinda move them forward a little quicker, or those seven things. I don't know. I was looking at those things and I don't, I think that.
Do you have more concern on the first slide than you do the second slide? Is that what I'm hearing?
Not necessarily. It's not my personal concern. I'm just looking at, like, Ms. Jenkins. I just wanna make sure we can move forward with at least some of these things.
Well, I mean, it's, needs to be in front of us.
Yeah, absolutely. But I'm good with, with move forward with a certain amount, absolutely.
Wonderful. All right, so as we consider, um, an outfitter individual, um, that, to potentially open and close graves, that takes us into this next slide about operations and maintenance. Um, you hear, here in the second bullet at point, we can, you know, right now, the way that Mr. Norton and his team manage our cemeteries is we actually have a private contractor that does all the maintenance at East View Cemetery and East View Cemetery Annex. We believe that if the council were desirous or willing to allow for a contractor to open and close the graves, that that would free up our, the crews and the individuals responsible for that activity to do this maintenance in-house with existing staff. This would not require new staff, but instead would free up staff, um, to do that. So we believe there's a potential, you know, savings. In this current year's budget, we have allocated fifty-three thousand for that contract. Next year is fifty-four thousand, and so that give you a rough idea of kinda what the potential cost savings could be to that. Um, another point of clarification, you know, is if an individual or outfit was hired, um, you know, they would go through a request for qualifications period, uh, or solicitation. Uh, they would be hired, they would brought on, they would set certain fees, and those fees, you know, would be collected as part of their proposal. And those fees would be passed on to the individual or the family that would be, you know, doing it. And some of those fees are listed here and were included in your packet.
Question.
Yes, sir.
We charge a fee for digging right there, but that's more than just that part of it. There's an administrative part of it, too. Shouldn't our fee be more necessarily than just what it costs to take the dirt out? You say the contractor's gonna set the fee. We should be setting the fee and then we contract with the contractor for some fee.
That's, that's one way to look at it, yes.
'Cause, I mean, administratively, we have records to keep. We have a lot of things to do with that. And it just seems like, to me, like, we would be subcontract, if we're doing it, we should subcontract that and be the, be the owner of this operation, not the subcontractor.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can certainly put together a program that considers that, if in fact, this group's interested in us even going this route.
Can we go back to the last slide? Um, so, help me here. It singles out East View Cemetery as opposed to East Hill, East View and Oak Hill. Why is that?
East View Cemetery and East View Annex are both, um, there's a contractor right now.
The mowing operation.
Mowing, weed eating, those operations.
So city staff does Oak Hill, but then a contractor does East View.
Yes, ma'am.
And East View Annex?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Why?
I think over time, you know, we've been.
It's been that way for probably ten years. Um, just cost decision. If I had to put on a crew of three or four more, uh, that fifty-three thousand dollars a year is probably gonna be two fifty a year. But I think that's why we're proposing to bring it back in-house, uh, by freeing up our staff with, with the opening and closing. That way, we can do it all with our staff. We, we would prefer to do it all with our staff.
Councilman Guion?
No, no, I'm just, I'm stretching.
Stretching your hand.
That could be dangerous.
He is a golfer. Um, i- if I may, there's one other, you know, well, I don't wanna pivot off that. I don't know that we got a direction. Is the council interested in proceeding with us hiring or looking to hire?
Any objections to?
Or keep it internal? That's.
I think it make, it makes sense.
Okay. No objections to going down this road?
And the opening and closing would be with both, all three cemeteries, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Mm-hmm. All cemeteries, treated equally. This slide here, we had cons, we put, um, I think, um, Ms. Kelsey put forward, um, the fee schedule during our retreat. And there was some great conversation around, um, lot prices. Um, what I've shown here is what the current is and the two, um, What I've shown here is what the current is in the two rows at the top. And then, called out retreat in red was the feedback we got from a majority of the folks during the conversation that we consider a city resident lot fee of a thousand per and thirty-five hundred for out of county and that to remove the county option. So, what I'm doing is I'm bringing that back today to get confirmation from this group.
Explain that again, you got a city residents, county residents and out of county.
Yes, sir, that's how it currently is. And when it was suggested to the group at the retreat, it was, it was you, I don't know if you had made it back at that time. And so, yeah, you were, and so, your colleagues on council suggested just being you're either, if you're in the city, you have a city price and if you don't live in the city, you have that price.
A non-resident.
Yes, sir, non-city resident price.
So, county resident would be like an out of county.
That's right, you could live in unincorporated Calheda County and get that mid-grave. But the, your colleagues suggested we do away with that op, option. And instead, just your, if you live in the city, it's a thousand dollars a lot. If you do not live in the city of noon, then it's thirty-five hundred dollars a lot. So, we're looking for confirmation from this body.
If I recall, we were just trying to really simplify it. So, this simplifies that. So, I'm in support of the way it reads.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
It can't be, it can't be a, a child of the deceased to say, well, I live in the city, right?
No, I mean, it is, it would be, it would follow that again back to the first slide.
Whatever their death certificate says they were resting on.
And there was, there was, this was not unanimous, for those of you who recall. But that's why we wanted confirmation as we proceed when we're updating the fee schedule, which will likely...
Typically, we regulate that by the purchaser of the lot.
That's right.
Say that again.
We would regulate it by the purchaser of the lots.
That's right. I mean, when you, if you were to have someone come in who lived in the city and buy ten plots. And then, like ten, five years from then or whatever it was, someone in their family who did not live in the city of noon and passed away, and their intention was, when they bought those ten plots, to have all of their family members in those plots, then that person would have the right to be buried in that plot.
Yep.
That's correct.
And hopefully, when you see the ordinance clarification on the authority and chain of ownership that we want to clarify, that makes that easy.
That's right.
That's what I'm saying, that was, was the purchaser or the deceased made that decision?
No, it was the purchaser. It was the, it was the...
Well, I was not there, so I just...
That's right, that's right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Good question, yeah. So, to your point, yes, you can buy them now and they're a thousand dollars today if, if this is approved for city residents. You could buy ten plots or one.
My question was, when was this gonna be implemented?
Upon adoption of the fee schedule by this body.
Okay, so if we came back in a couple of weeks and did this, then this would be effective today without any of the improvements that we've been talking about for the cemeteries being done.
Correct.
Okay, so in that case, I'm not for it because we've made improvements to Oak Hill. We're talking about putting a mausoleum or whatever the other word is for the other thing. And then, then do the niche. And then, doing improvements at Eastview. Eastview has been so long overdue with having improvements done to it. And I just can't fathom having doubled the price and still haven't done anything with no guarantees that it's actually first in line to get anything done to it. It could be years. So, I would be opposed to this until Eastview is brought up to the design standards that we have put in here that are comparable to Oak Hill.
Do lean over here. Go ahead.
I have one quick question.
Yes, sir.
Going back to the discussion before this one, those three columns of pricing. So, we're talking about in-city and out-of-city or city, county and out-of-county?
If you're in the city, you have one price. You live anywhere else except the city of noon and you have another price.
Okay, so we change that third column to out-of-city resident then?
Out of, you just, yes, yes.
Or a non-resident.
That's right, we need...
Non-resident, yeah.
Yes, you're a non-city resident.
That's just the way it was discussed at the, in the retreat, so.
That's exactly what it was. Correct. But we subsidize it now as citizens.
Yes, sir.
And so, that should be some benefit.
Do you have that information, ask Mr. Craver?
On the amount currently? No, I don't. It was in the packet, I don't have it to memory. But you're right, that was some of the logic. Councilman Show was that, I think, I believe Councilman Thompson brought that up and said, "These are city tax dollars that are paying to maintain and have over generations of time." And so, that was some of the logic behind it.
The city cemetery is very heavily subsidized with lot sales and current grave opening fees. We generate around two-hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. And, and total cost to operate cemetery is in the six-hundred, seven-hundred thousand dollar range. So, yeah, the overall general fund supplements, supplements it pretty heavily.
Four-fifty spread.
Yes. It's on page two of your packet, thank you, Mayor Brady.
Next line.
You? Think I have a direction there. That one is on the, should we proceed with the third party? What I saw was, yes, at least, it seems like the body's interested in at least looking at it. We can always put their request out and we get proposals back. And if we don't like them, we don't have to accept them.
And you said they'd be bonded and all that stuff too?
Oh, yes, sir. Yep, 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 yeah.
So, this is a, as he said in the beginning, this is a three-part process. We've already gone through the first part, which was cemetery price policy. And this body indicated a willingness for the staff to move forward and bring us something back. We're into the second part of this, which is operations. And we'd like to get a yes or no from the council with regard to having staff bring something back to us that we can review. Any objection to that?
No.
Just go ahead and forward.
Okay, all right. So, the third part is going to be the maintenance and capital improvement, planning decision of the 2025 cemetery improvements. And, go ahead, I've got a question when you...
Yeah, so the same material that was provided to this corporate body during the retreat, you know, the SPOS 2025 program adopted by referendum, passed by referendum by our voters in Calheda County, allocated two-point-five million dollars available to the city of noon for cemetery improvements. During the lead-up to that referendum, the city shared photos you see above. One for improvements, potential improvements at Oak Hill Cemetery to may include mausoleum, columbarium, niche. One, all, a few of the above. It also shows significant improvements to perimeter fencing to include what you see above you to Eastview Cemetery and Eastview Annex. Those were contemplated and shown ahead of time for potential use for the two-point-five million. I would like to tell you this time right now, we don't have cost estimate, cost estimates on any of that. So, something else that was included was fifty-five thousand dollars for a master plan for our cemetery improvements so that we as a body, as an organization, have a really good, strong understanding of how we may spend these dollars and over time, how we can spend these dollars. And so, you see at the bottom of this slide, under the red recommendation is that we proceed with the cemetery master plan to get a best understanding of how that two-point-five million dollars may be spent over time to make the improvements shown here. Or any other direction as the council may see fit. Councilman Show, I think.
I like the idea of a master plan, but I, surely, we can get some ballpark numbers on some of this because my concern is we're, if we start building some structure, you're laying out a lot of money and it's a very slow return on investment. And we're sitting there talking about, we're already spending more money than we take in. And I'm just not real big on spending a big chunk of money for something that's, you know, not gonna bring any money back.
I agree with your assessment. I think that, I think something, I need to elaborate a little bit more on the master plan. I think it's more than just the two-and-a-half million dollars. It's the master plan for all of our cemeteries and it's more than a potential columbarium or niche or entryway. It's looking at our roadway systems, it's, it's looking at our drainage structures.
See landscaping, what we need, all that is great.
And it's laying out short-term improvements, it's laying out long-term improvements. And it's, and it's estimating cost for those and a priority schedule. So, I'd imagine it's gonna be much more than the two-and-a-half million dollar allocation. But it's a tool that we're gonna be able to use for many years in programming the improvements. I, I'd hate to go down the road of getting, spending money on the, on the niche columbarium when that may not end up being our high priority. We may have other roadway improvements. I know we still have some dirt gravel roads in some of the cemeteries you may want to focus on. So, I, I really believe the cemetery master plan is planning one-on-one. Let's plan before we prioritize where we're gonna spend the money in these cemeteries.
That makes more sense than anything we talked about.
Which is why I'm about to ask this question. Why don't we do this first before we start coming back talking about all these other things? Because strictly told, some of this may lead to some more ordinance changes. It seems like we're getting the cart before the horse in our planning.
Is there, is there, I like this idea of master plan. I, I, I do see the ordinance and the master plan as separate, as separate issue entities. But is there a chance that we could go ahead and get pricing and design on the, the fencing? Not the fencing, but the, you know, the structure railing and columns for Eastview Cemeteries? Because I feel like that, you know, that's kind of, that's really needs to be done anyway, in my opinion, before we do anything else.
And I would disagree with you, but the only thing I would say is we need to make sure it fits in with the plan. When you start doing a master plan, I would like a consistent plan across all cemeteries as far as look the best we can. And then, get the, you can get the figure to do it with it. I, I don't disagree with what you're saying about doing that, but I just think we ought to get a master plan to go with it.
Ten-four, I think we, just to say, I think, I would hope, and looking at this, it seems that it does fit the style of Oak Hill.
It does.
So, we already kind of established an architectural standard for our cemetery. So, I would say go with that.
Yes, that can take place, we can do that.
I mean, I'm a firm believer that all our cemeteries need to be of equal and have, be worthy of the name City of Noonan, regardless of which one they are. I, I might maybe take a look at, as part of the master planning, and I just thought of this, was, you know, we're looking at doing all this, the columbarium and all that stuff at Oak Hill. Would it make sense to also look at one at Eastlake? I don't know, I don't know if there's enough space or at the annex or something, you know? Again, maybe this is long-term planning, very long-term planning.
Yes, sir, that could be, I think that would be part of the master planning process.
And that's exactly...
Again, to keep them all on, you know, I just want to make sure that we're, all our cemeteries truly are worthy of the city of noonan.
And that's exactly why I think the master plan needs to be done before the ordinance changes and the fee schedules and all that other stuff is because we really don't know until we plan it what we're talking about.
Ms. Phillips, talk to us about the, the timing. This is a SPOS twenty-five project, so we don't even begin collecting funds until February of twenty-five.
Correct.
So, talk to us about the timing, do you think, of these projects might occur?
Projects or the actual master plan?
Pro, projects.
Oh, I, you know, with, you know, with the advanced funding, the three million dollars for the recreation, and we're, we're gonna collect in the neighborhood of, what are we gonna collect annually? Eight million, eleven million?
Well, you take the three out.
Yeah, you take the three out. I, I mean, I think best-case scenario is, you know, if it's a small project somewhere near the end of twenty-five, probably realistic. If it's a medium-sized project, somewhere mid-twenty-six before you really have funds in hand to do something on a sound decent basis.
And then, how long does it take us to get the plan back? We go and move forward with that?
Well, we can actually, we can actually start the RFP process for the plan right now, knowing that, you know, we'll start funding it, I mean, here we are in November. Execute contract, it'd probably be February, March before we could execute the contract. And I envision that's about a three, three, four month process.
Three, four, could be six on a long end.
You're looking at summer for a master plan?
Yeah, and so, that lines up well to start spending those dollars in twenty-six, end of twenty-five, twenty-six.
Right.
The SPOS can be very fluid, that's the good thing about SPOS.
Okay.
That's directed to the council, you know?
We're, we're much cheaper than a lot of the other cities around us, in fact, all of the other cities around us. And I would hate to see us lose that opportunity for the, for the fee increase during that period of time that we waited for what's been just described to us a year, year and fifteen months to be able to move through those things in order to just get a plan. I think we, I think I'd like to see the policy, I'd like to see the operations. Let us move forward as quickly as we can with the other items of getting the plan in place. If we can price out the two entrances into Eastview and Eastview Annex and use those as separate projects, knowing that they're gonna mesh into the overall plan when it's, when it's presented to us, wouldn't have a problem with moving forward, doing that as separate projects, but with SPOS money. And, you know, move forward like that. But I, I don't think we need to miss the opportunity of eighteen months, it's almost two years' worth of lower fees.
We need to vote for that today for January one.
No, we're not ready for that day. We don't, we don't have any ordinance in front of us.
For January one, I would like to have the fee structure in place. Would that, is that possible?
I don't know, you'd have to ask.
I have a question. Does the improvements that we talked about, I heard there was a fence included in that? Is that around the niche and around the mausoleum? Is that around Oak Hill? What, what is that?
This right here is only at Eastview and Eastview Annex.
That, I'm not talking about Eastview, I'm talking about Oak Hill.
There's no fence to be contemplated there. That's the lot line drawn there, that's just showing.
Oak Hill is not fenced.
There's someone that...
On the front?
Partial fences in places.
On the front? We did a whole big old two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar project on the front.
That's what that would be.
So, there is a fence. And we did, so the fence improvement that you're talking about is strictly at Eastview. There is not something that's gonna be around according to the design that you have.
According to that, there was no fencing proposed at all and no additional fencing. All the fencing and entry structures were the Eastview Annex.
So, there are no plans to do anything else at Oak Hill regarding its perimeter?
Correct.
Okay.
Currently.
Could be something that changes in the master plan about fencing. But Mayor Brady is right, there, there is no quote-unquote perimeter fencing around the entirety of Oak Hill. Yes, there are fencing in certain locations, especially where jointed property owners decided to install fencing. But the, the entire cemetery is not fenced.
Okay, is there any objection moving forward with the, with the budget, with the project? It's budgeted money for next year, correct?
It is. Correct.
No objection here.
Anyone?
All right.
Okay, anything else on that?
No, sir.
Let's move on.
Thank you.
Under visitors, requests for street closures of Rock and Roll Festival, Octo, I mean, I'm sorry, April the twelfth, twenty-twenty-five, six AM to ten PM.
Council mayor, glad to be here for the third year in a row. We're glad to be here, so.
State your name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry, Danny Beck.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you, glad to be here.
Any questions of Mr. Beck regarding the Rock and Roll Festival? Is there any presentation you have, Mr. Beck?
Uh, we're just asking for the street closures like we have the last two years. I think last year was maybe the eighteenth, the year before that was the thirteenth. And this year, we'll be asking for April the twelfth. We're also asking the city to help with fencing this year and a community stage as well.
There are some dollar amounts that's...
There is a dollar amount of eighteen thousand dollars.
Okay, any questions of Mr. Beck about his ask here? Anyone?
I do have a specific question. Eighteen thousand dollars, what? I have this piece of paper in front of me, so can you just kind of show me an overall, what, what that would account?
Be glad to. The ten of that would go for fencing, and I think I saw a lot of you councilmen there last year, will be fencing inside and outside the loop this year. We, we've decided that we have some gaps and this, the city really needs to be locked down where people can, I say lockdown, I didn't mean to use that word. We, we don't need pedestrians crossing in front of cyclists going thirty-five miles an hour. And we, it's, it's more of a safety issue for the cyclist as well as the pedestrian.
So, that's fill in the gap that you didn't have, you learned a lesson last year and now...
We learned, yes. Luckily, nobody got hurt, but as, I was chewing my fingernails.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Before we make the move, motion, I'd like to make sure we phrase it as up to eighteen thousand dollars.
Correct.
Yes, okay.
No more.
Is that correct?
Thank you.
Yeah, clarification?
Thank you.
Okay, so, now is there a motion?
Pardon?
Is there a motion, man?
I made the motion, we'd approve it.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Motion of second, we approve the request is up to eighteen thousand dollars expenditure for the April twelfth Rock and Roll Festival. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like a sign, motion carried. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The next item is a request for street closures for Porch Fest event on April the twelfth, twenty-twenty-five. But I think that date has changed, tire of you.
It has. Good afternoon, thank you for giving me another chance.
I know who you are, but if you'll state your name for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Melody Kaiser and I'm the primary organizer of the Noonan Porch Fest. Just to remind you all, the Porch Fest is a music festival where...
Um, just to remind you all, the Porch Fest is a music festival where bands and musicians will set up and perform on the front porches of homes along Wesley Street and Temple Avenue while vendors and merchants sell goods along College Street. Um, as I stated in the last meeting, we are partnering with the Nunun History Center, and in addition to them running our daytime VIP event, I wanted to point out in this meeting that they're also hosting their garden walks simultaneously during this event. And by combining these events on the same date and within the perimeters of the same street closures, we are trying to alleviate the pressures that are felt by the Nunun Police Department during these events as um the city manager expressed concerns about in the last council meeting. Um, and then I also wanted to just clarify some points and topics that came to our attention from the city since the last meeting. The first is how we will fund the event, so uh we plan to fund the Porch Fest primarily through sponsorship. So in addition to local sponsors, um we're working to acquire larger sponsors, so to give you an example of this, um Jeremy Powell, who is the lead programming director, one of them, and the head of the podcasting department at Georgia Public Broadcasting and PBS, enthusiastically supports the Nunun Porch Fest. And he has agreed to utilize his network of contacts and event sponsors at G P B to help us garner larger corporate sponsors for our event. And then in addition to sponsorship funds, we're organizing two separate VIP events uh for the Porch Fest where the tickets are fifty dollars each and seventy-five dollars each respectively, and we're also gonna charge vendors a booth fee. Per the city's request, we're also budgeting to have a police officer at every roadblock to ensure the safety of our community and the logistical integrity of our event. Our mission with this event is to promote the vibrant culture of Nunun, and by bringing the community together, supporting families in our community through children's activities and a family-friendly focus, and promoting the arts communities of Nunun. In addition to the organizers having ex- extensive experience in music event organization, our organizers are musicians who have performed in Nunun for years and even decades, and we feel as though there's a desperate need for such an event in our city. Hosting the music festival amplifies the music of our community and honors the talent, businesses and artistry that make this city so special. Per the council recommendations in the last meeting, we have come prepared with an alternate date of May thirty-first in the event that the bike race took precedence.
Okay, any questions of Ms. Kaiser?
Cletus, all good with you? Y- yes, yeah, we're, we're comfortable with that date, May thirty-first was correct.
Yes, sir.
This is, that's the weekend after Memorial Day.
Yes, sir.
Correct, okay. Any other questions? We appreciate your willingness to, to uh adjust.
Of course.
And um, think this would be a great event for our city.
I certainly want to say, um, Ella, she's done a really good job answering our questions, she's been very professional and diligent in answering the questions, so I hope that they have a great event, so.
Thank you, we do too, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second to approve the request from May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye, all those like sign, thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
The next item on the agenda today is a request to close Evans Drive on November the twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four, uh eight forty-five AM to ten uh to one-ten PM for the Evans Middle School event, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second to approve as presented, any discussion? All those, all those in favor indicate by saying aye, all those like sign, motion carried, thank you. That ends our regular agenda today, ladies and gentlemen, we do have a need to go into an executive session for real estate and for legal. If Mayor Protim Guillen will read that motion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move that we now enter into a closed session as allowed by OCGA fifty-dash-fourteen-dash-four and pursuant to the advice by the city council for the purpose of real estate and legal, and that we in open session adopt a resolution authorized in directing the mayor or presiding officer to execute an affidavit in compliance with OCGA fifty-dash-fourteen-dash-four, and that this body ratify the actions of the council taken in closed session and confirm that the subject matters of the closed section, session were within exceptions permitted by the open meetings law.
Sir, second. Motion of second, all, all those in favor indicate by saying aye, all those like sign, motion carried, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, we have an executive session.